Are we live, Lisa?
You're now live, you can begin.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, it's 9:30. We had a...
Present.
So I will start off with a silent reflection. And this morning I'd asked that we hold counter first since the loss of his father as in our thoughts, our condolences go to him and his family. So join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, everyone. I would ask Stefan to raise the report from motions in our in camera session.
Yes, good morning, this is the report that County Council did meet for a couple of minutes in camera this morning, starting at about 9:17 a.m. to do two things. The first was to approve minutes of its July 8 in camera session. And secondly, to prove to approve minutes of its committee AM and PM in camera sessions of its August 19 meeting. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Item number seven on the agenda is an update from Dr. Rannaday, our medical officer of health. Welcome, doctor. Yeah, I'm gonna have to turn it up. Not yet. Not giving it yet.
Okay, how about this?
Getting better, a little higher.
Okay. I can. Now I am at the max whole volume. There we go.
Very perfect.
Okay, sorry about that.
Technical, no problem.
Um, so I thank you, Warden, good morning, everyone. I will keep the update very short because I know that you have some delegations and a lot of other business to get through. Not much has changed in the last two weeks since I presented to you at... Hello? Oh, okay, not much has changed in the last two weeks since I presented to you at AM and PM committee meetings. So we've had 339 cases to date overall, 311 recoveries. We don't have any active institutional or other outbreaks at this time. And the two biggest priorities right now in terms of public health actions related to COVID are supporting and working with the healthcare system to plan for sustainability of testing and and treatments in the fall and working with the education system to plan for the reopening of schools. One brief update, I remember there was a question about were schools planning on on staggering their their start dates and there's a bit more information on that board by board. They have decided to do some staggering. And so, for example, in some of the boards, the high school students will be will be attending one week later than originally planned. And that's to give some time for teachers and other staff to be in the building and to run through what a school day would look like and to have some additional health and safety training. So that's just a brief update to to that piece. And other than that, apart from those two big priorities for right now, there are no other major updates from from two weeks ago.
Thank you for that, Dr. Rannaday, are there any questions for Dr. Rannaday this morning?
I have a question.
Counselor Lusche.
Doctor, could you give us your opinion about the paramedics that everybody talks about coming back in October, November? Are we going to have the same thing as we did?
The paramedics?
Yes. What's your opinion of this? Because we are asked to meet in a committee a couple of weeks in council chambers. And, you know, if we're going to have the same problem, are we gonna go ahead and meet in the council chambers?
I'm sorry, councillor, I don't I don't understand the question with respect to paramedics.
Pandemic, I think, didn't you mean?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat your question then?
Your opinion of the same problem coming back again in October or November?
Oh, oh, okay, so the overall COVID-19, okay. So most places that have opened up have seen more cases. It's almost inevitable that there will be more cases as things open up. I think the the other side of it, though, is that many jurisdictions that have taken public health measures to avert COVID have also seen a lower season in terms of influenza and other respiratory illnesses. So I think the piece is if public health measures can continue effectively, there's a way to keep the rates of transmission low. But most definitely, I think the point is as people start circulating again and moving around and and more parts of our economy are opened up and more places to be and things to do, yet we will start to see more cases.
Thank you, councillor, start.
Yes, Dr. Rannaday, I'm getting many questions related to the reopening of schools and the potential closing of schools. Let's assume that there's outbreaks by the end of September. Is there contingency plans, are there contingency plans in place to handle school closings as if they were institutional outbreaks in terms of testing and how would that testing happen?
So, thank you, councillor, there are there are plans in place to handle what might constitute an outbreak. There are two kinds of guidance documents that have come forward from the ministries. The Ministry of Education issued a guidance document to principals around how to manage ill students and what to do in that situation. And there's a separate guidance document that just came out a few days ago for public health in terms of how to define an outbreak, how to, what protocols to run around an outbreak and working with the schools on notification procedures. So there are there are sets of guidance documents that walk us through that and we're actively working on those and also talking to the school board partners about how it would play out. I think it's important to remember that the important distinction is that there may be cases where should like, so this is a little bit complex, but there may be cases where children are isolated from a school by virtue of caught being a close contact of someone else. And in that situation, that would not meet the criteria for an outbreak to be called at a school. It's really the idea that transmission has happened in the school setting and that's why an outbreak would be called or that you're not sure if it did. So there are circumstances where children might be isolated or not allowed to go to school where an outbreak would not be called. And there are circumstances where if we detected cases in a school and they were linked or they were connected in some way, then we would call an outbreak. Then we would do the standard processes around contact tracing and the schools are going to keep records about which kids were where, who is in contact with whom to facilitate our ability to reach those people and and isolate them. And then those folks will off will be will symptomatic people for sure would be offered tests, other people would be offered tests as part of being able to go to the assessment center and get tested.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bradley.
Yes, doctor, a few weeks ago I had raised with you the issue of the funding for the province, which Toronto is using for a rapid response team of experienced nurses and new nurses to go into the schools. And at that time, you didn't seem to have a lot of information on that fund. And I believe Mr. Taylor said that they were working on some sort of direction like that where there would be, if there's an issue in the schools with COVID, that there would be a a team from public health go to that school. Has that moved forward at all?
Um, yes, so it's moved forward in the sense that we're actively bringing, working to bring those staff into the organization and then making a plan to support schools that might be an outbreak, which would involve, you know, assigning them an outbreak team like we usually do and having those folks work directly with the school to help manage the outbreak.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Rannaday before we let him get on with his day? Seeing none. Thank you for that update, Dr. Rannaday. Talk to you again soon.
Yes, thank you.
Item eight is delegations. We have us with us today. Mike Lapine, President of Blue Water Health, Chair of the Sarnia Lantin Ontario Health Team. So Mike, go ahead, I think they'll give you access to share the screen and...
Okay, good morning, everyone. Okay, you want me to share my screen then?
Whatever, I think some of us have we all have the presentation that you have.
Put the, can you see that? I just shared my screen. Is that okay?
That's...
It's good?
Yep.
I was asking Taylor to provide you a brief update today on where we are in the journey to becoming an Ontario Health Team. So I'll give you a quick overview of what's happened in the, you know, since the inception of Ontario Health Team last since last April and where we're at locally. And then there's been an ask that we get endorsement from the various organizations to become part of the Ontario Health Team. So I'll just begin by, you know, our our mission statement, if you want to call it that, at the time, for the time being is innovating together for better health. We're very interested in improving the health status of people, not just improving care to people, but ensuring people actually don't need care by becoming healthier is the whole thrust of it. So this screen gives you an overview or a sense of how many partners are involved in this endeavor. And it pretty much touches every single area of healthcare delivery in in Lanting County. So you can see there's long-term care, home care, community care. There's a whole group of patients, client, family caregivers. This is a very important sector to us. They they will be sitting on all the planning tables to ensure that the voice of the patients and families are considered when we're doing planning. All the primary care, all the primary care delivers are a part of it. Of course, acute care with the hospital, Polk and Sarnia, Victoria, the hospice, the indigenous communities. We we have the two that have been really engaged so far. The the third indigenous community, Walpole Island, is interesting. Although they technically are in... They frequently, hello? Although they're technically in Lanting County, they frequently access their care in in Wallisburg, which is actually in Kent County. So I'm going to get into what attribution means in a moment and we will be revisiting that. We've got some digital health support and supply chain support from Transform Shared Services. And then all the mental health and addiction services are also included in the application. So this is a really enormous number of organizations. And really, I can't think of any any provider of significance that's not been included to date in the in the planning and in the application process. In terms of the journey we're on, last April, they sent out what were called self-assessments. Well, actually, a year ago April, they sent out what were called self-assessments. And people that were interested in becoming Ontario Health Team were to fill out a self-assessment. And based on the strength of that self-assessment, they would then invite you to full application. We opted in April to not do the first round of self-assessments as we were told that there will be a second round in in the fall of last year. We completed the self-assessment, we began the work in earnest in October of 2019. And we submitted the self-assessment in December and January. The right of drugs started January. What we expected was that we would hear back on our self-assessment and whether we were invited to full application in about March this year. However, I'll just say events got in the way of that. And that that approval was delayed. So we really didn't hear anything up until August. And then in early August of this year, they indeed told us we'd been invited to full application. And they gave us six weeks to complete the full application. So we've we've done a tremendous amount of work in the last three to four weeks to get this full application prepared. It's to be submitted by September 18. And we've been told the approval to establish an Ontario Health Team will be, if we hit the September 18 deadline, will occur on October 19. So in five weeks, we should hear back whether we've been invited to become an Ontario Health Team. So there is a lot of urgency for us to get the hit the September 18 deadline because the the timeline after that is still at this point indeterminate. So I want to talk a little bit about the population and who we will be serving. And this this is actually a lot of good work that that the ministry's done on this. And it's called, what's your attributed population? And what that means is where do people actually get their care? And how they track that is they have all the OHT billing data, they have hospital, home care, registration data, they know who's in long-term care, anybody that gets funded through the Ministry of Health. They actually have a tracking on all that data. Then they went to the Institute of Clinical評估的 Sciences did studies of where tracking, where do people get their care based on that ministry data? And what's sort of refreshing compared to when they established LINs was when they established LINs about 15 years ago, they were doing it based on population. And the Erie St. Clair LIN didn't have quite enough population, so Sarnia Lantin was put with with Windsor. Even though we had no clinical relationships with Windsor, in other words, our patients would never really, when they travel outside of Lanting County, never went to Windsor, they all went to London. And that continued through the whole sort of the LIN era. And with this, what they're actually doing is truly looking at where are patients accessing their care? And what we found was of 125,000 patients residents in Lanting County, 115,000 of them are attributed to our population. So that's a really high correlation, that's over 90% of patients in Lanting County receive their care in Lanting County. So other interesting findings in this is you can see that a lot of this would be well-known to everyone, but it's worth just that you're emphasizing is the adults of the 65 plus age adults are expected to increase over the next 20 years. And so that puts an additional burden on the healthcare system. We are home to three First Nations, which I referenced, and Kettle, Kettleland, Stoney Point and Amjanon are have been engaged to date. Walpole Island is still a little bit of a question mark because when you do the attribution data, many residents of Walpole Island will actually go to Wallisburg for their care, but that's that has yet to be determined. We know there's a high degree of substance abuse and mental health pressures. And we can see it in our IED visits, ALT rates, and so there's support needed there. And over 50% of our older adults have two or more chronic conditions. And as you as you increase those comorbidities, the complexity of healthcare required is just increasing. So what what do you do, what do you have to identify in a full application? Is you you have to identify a year one population. So in the first year of your OHT, they don't want you to look at all 115 residents. They want you to look at a subset of high needs or high utilizers of the healthcare system and really work together to improve both the care and the outcomes for a given population. So we chose two populations to focus on. The first is the care for our seniors population. And, you know, these are people that we've mentioned, I mentioned earlier, that have several comorbidities, like several chronic conditions. And so they are in high need of intense care. And the second group is the the youth, mental health and addictions group. And we know that actually it's been exacerbated with COVID that this there's increasing pressure in this age demographic. And these these this population needs specialized care. Now, interestingly, the the start, if we get granted to become an OHT, which would be towards the end of this calendar year, probably in November, December, it coincides nicely with the Access Open Mind project that we're working on downtown, which actually directly this this project directly addresses addresses these the second group of individuals. And I know the county's been well-involved and I want to actually take the opportunity to thank the county for all their assistance in establishing the 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 site that we have on Front Street here in Sarnia. So that's the, those are the two populations we'll be looking at. As part of the data package, they also included over 30 indicators. And what you have to do is select three to five indicators that you'll work on and be accountable for in your year one. So in other words, these indicators should be related to the one of those two populations I just referenced earlier. And it's something that we all rally around and work to improve that status. But the the interesting, the other interesting thing that they shared with us is that when you look at all old hip spending in the county, so this is hospitals, physician billings, home care, long-term care, all the mental health and addiction. Indeed, we spend about $450 million of Ministry of Health funding to care for those 115,000 residents. If you do the quick math, it's about $4,000 per person. But that is the sort of the pot that the Ontario Health Team is is expected to manage and coordinate. As you go on to the performance measures, so I mentioned that we will be accountable in year one to look after five we're using five performance measures. And these will be the things we'll track in the first year to show we need to set a bench line at the start of the year and show that we've been able to move the dots on these during the course of the year to working differently with one another. So the first one is avoidable emergency visits for conditions best managed elsewhere. Wait times for first home care service from the community. Acute care patients that had, so these are hospital patients that had a follow-up visit within seven days of discharge. Timely access to primary care. And how many patients were hospitalized for ambulatory care sensitive conditions? In other words, how many patients were hospitalized for conditions that maybe could have been managed in an alternate setting? So the the other sections of the application, so those are the the key working parts of the application. But the other areas that they wanted us to address in the application are an explanation about how the patient, family and caregiver roles, how they will be involved in care redesign. So there's a section on that. They've added a section on leveraging our previous experiences, including COVID-19 learning. So this is new. So the first round of Ontario Health Teams, of course, didn't have this, but on this next round, they're really hoping to glean from us what we've learned and what we could carry forward from our COVID-19 experiences of the last several months. There's a section on how we're going to meet the unique needs of specialized populations, particularly indigenous and Francophone communities. And then there's a section on implementation planning. So in other words, the project management, how will we go about pulling all this together and coordinating it as we go forward? It's worth noting that the people that were involved in the first round of Ontario Health Teams, their applications were quite onerous. They were quite lengthy and in several cases, they were two to 300 pages. They've really stretched and abbreviated it for the second round. So this, on this round, we have a much more succinct application. It's probably not going to be more than 10 pages and they don't want any appendices. So they want you to be very direct and poignant in everything you you put in the application. And it's been, in some ways, it's been refreshing to just be able to just talk about what's critically essential to move forward. So as I explained earlier, the next step to full application are everybody, all those partners have a copy of the full application. They want partners sign off. And why I'm here today is in this round, when we did the self-assessment, it just required the an executive director of each organization to sign off. On this round, they're wanting board chairs or the equivalent of a board chair to also sign off, which in most cases means they need a motion from their respective boards, allowing their chairs to sign off off of the full application. The electronic signatures are due on September 16. And we would like to submit the application on September 17. They're they're due on September 18. So we we provided a proposed recommendation to the County Council. And this is very similar to what all the other organizations are will be receiving. But it's it's, I think it's really important to understand, this is not a legally binding contract and sign off. This has nothing to do with governance at this point. This is really about a commitment to work and coordinate with one another at the operational level to improve services for our patients. There is in the first year, an obligation to talk about a collaborative decision-making framework, which is where you get into how are decisions made? And where does the balance of power rest when you make those decisions? However, at this juncture, that's not really what they're asking for. What they're asking for, are you agreeable to become part of this journey? And it's worth noting that the full application is just another gateway or another step along the path of becoming a mature Ontario Health Team. There will be many other gateways along the journey, this is just the next gateway for us. So to support your deliberations, we've just offered the following draft motion and, you know, you're welcome to to edit it or change it as you see fit. That the Lanting County Council endorsed the Sarnia Lantin Ontario OHT full application and authorized sign off of the application for submission. So with that, I'll just, I'll maybe hand it over to the Warden to see if there are any questions.
Thank you for that. A lot of work has gone into this. Are there any questions? Councillor Bradley?
The most obvious question from a local government point of view, financial obligations down the road. We have been entrapped in the past, if I can use that phrase, into programs, particularly in social services. And then the province moves away, ambulance service is a good example. And I'm sure the Warden and others can recall some others where they edged away and then expected the municipality, local government, the county to fill the gap. Is that a realistic thing to be concerned about? Or this is simply going to be carried by the province and the team that's part of this?
That's a great question and I and I wish I could answer it in as comprehensively as you would like. They have not really been to the point where they're discussing how the healthcare teams will be funded. There's their their response to date has been there's no new funding. What you're looking at is taking that $450 million we're already spending and can you reallocate, reallocate or shift it around to be to more effectively deliver care? What they're hoping is within the same envelope from the ministry that we're able to to change how we deliver care and get better outcomes for that. So no, they have not been very clear yet on how these will be funded or what indeed what metrics will you use for funding? Will it be population-based? Will it be some other metric they use? Will it be based on your outcome? We're not clear on that, but what is clear is that within the next year or two, everyone in Ontario will be part of an Ontario Health Team. This is their new version of the what we call the LIN structure. It will be subdivided now into these Ontario Health Teams.
Okay, I'm fine with that. To move this to the next stage and it's Warden wants a motion at some point, I'm pleased to move it.
Okay, councillor Bird had a question. You're on mute.
Okay, thank you, Warden Webber. Good morning, Mr. Lapine, thank you for your presentation. I have three questions on a comment for you. And my first one touches on the same as Mayor Bradley's. But, you know, I understand what the ministry are requiring in this application. And I understand that you've said in this presentation, you're not looking for a legally binding support from the county. But can you please give more of the specifics of what you personally are administratively looking for? For this first year, especially when it comes to services, staffing and or funding?
I think what we're looking, we we've actually, we're well situated as an Ontario Health Team. We've had a table called Ontario Health Quality Partners. And it's been running for over two years now. And it includes all the major players from home and community care, acute care, primary care, mental health and addiction. And we have been working on changing the status of many of our patients, particularly those that are particularly challenged. So those suffering from respiratory illnesses, those suffering from dementia, those that are frequently having high hospitalization rates. I think the endpoint of all this is really what you would look at is when you look at other jurisdictions that go to this population-based management is, and I can be so bold to say this because I'm the operator of the hospital, is the less, if you have a fixed pot of money, so $450 million to look after our population, the less you can spend in the hospital, the more the more spread you can get or the better health outcomes you have. When patients end up in hospital, costs increase. And frequently what we see is there are many patients in hospital that argue they aren't true hospital patients. So what I'm looking for is an endpoint or what one of the goals is in the Ontario Health Team. Please shrink the footprint of a hospital and acute care service to just be delivering what are... Please shrink the footprint of a hospital and acute care service to just be delivering what are acute care services and use those extra resources to be reinvested in the community to provide better outcomes. That's really, I think, what the primary premise is when you look at
Okay.
larger population health management question.
Okay, thank you. And the next point, I just, just want to clarify that if year one goes as you hope, are you going to be looking for a continued support from the county? And will that support change from being non-legally binding at that point?
I guess, but I, possibly. The county, the counties, if you looked at all those sectors that we have listed on the partners, the county is very active in many of them. So the county is a, is a huge purveyor of healthcare services and social services in the county. So yes, we would probably be looking at different arrangements, different governance. Perhaps there would be a new board, an overseeing board at some point down the road. Again, the ministry is not directing or really emphasizing the whole governance question. They're really hoping right now that in the current governance structures, we can cooperatively change how we operate and change outcomes for residents.
Okay, and the next point, I know you explained about the delays from on your part, the ministry's part. But you know, with only two weeks away from the deadline, I'm really concerned that it comes to council today. It doesn't give us enough time to really, well, from my point of view anyway, I like to have time to investigate, research, check everything out. And bringing it today and you're looking for an answer today is a really tight deadline. So I just wanted to comment on that. And then we have the final thing. You mentioned in your presentation about equality or like specific groups in your presentation. But you know, I'm, I'm always concerned about that because I believe every human being should be treated equally. And whether there are, for example, physical challenges or mental challenges, that might make us to have, adopt different methods. But as human beings, we should all be treated equally with no special preferences. Just, just my thoughts on that.
Yes, I, I'll speak to your first point. Yes, we would have ideally liked a lot more time getting something in August when many, frequently many people are on vacation and you need to collaborate with 35 partners and having it completed in essence for Labor Day does not leave us with a lot of time. We did not set those, those time parameters. And what was clear to us is that if we miss the September 19th deadline, we don't know when the next date is. So I, we, I apologize for that, but that was really set by the ministry and it's not been ideal for us either. There's a lot of collaboration, need to defer to these self-assessments and we weren't granted enough time to do that. In terms of your second point, yes, we're focusing on year one with a particular population. So you just, you don't want to bite off more than you can chew. But when the full Ontario Health Team has evolved or is fully mature, we will be looking at all those 115,000 patients. Everyone will be included in it. So it's not we're not, it's not that we're not incorporating them into the year one. We're actually having a targeted focus on a specific group to really think about how we can change the way we operate in a meaningful way to make a bigger impact for them. It's a bit like walking before we run. But the endpoint again of all this is everyone in Lampton County will have superior service from the healthcare umbrella when we're at home maturation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a report. Item 11A has a report with a recommendation from, for, it is very similar to the one of this report. So I, this time I'd asked for a motion to receive this presentation for information. Counselor Napper and Counselor Ann. Any further questions? All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lapaine, for your presentation. And we'll deal with, when we get to 11A recommendations. So moving along to item nine is the minutes of council from July the 8th. If I could have a mover and a seconder for the July 8th council minutes. Counselor Wade, seconded by Counselor Miller. Any questions regarding the July 8th council meeting minutes? All in favor of those minutes? Carrie, thank you. See, everybody says. Item 10 is correspondence. There's a recommendation that can be received and filed. And there's four pieces of correspondence with letters regarding payments to the county from the different ministries and the Enbridge. Is someone prepared to move, receive and file those correspondence? Deputy Warden Marriott, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Any questions on any of those correspondence letters? Seeing none, all in favor of receiving the correspondence? Ends up, okay, opposed? That is carried, thank you. Item B is correspondence from member municipalities. This correspondence from the city of Sarnia requesting an annual presentation to Sarnia City or State of the County address. Counselor Bradley.
I would move it on the basis that it also, if the warden at the time and the CEO is willing to make it, those presentations that it'd be available to all member municipalities.
Okay. Counselor Arnold, was that a motion or is that? Counselor Arnold had a comment?
Yes, just wondering if I could get an explanation better from Counselor Bradley. Does he mean that you're going to put a presentation together to go around for all municipalities? Or is that something that you'll have put together and put on the website? And then we can ask questions that way before I second it?
Yeah, well, it's not my motion. So all I can say was that it was passed by Sarnia Council and maybe the other councillors want to jump in. They felt there's been a number of issues, specifically to the city and the county, that it would be good to have a, an annual presentation to council, just sort of a, I don't know, a State of the County situation where the council can ask questions of the warden and the CEO. And that was it. And I presume if other communities want to do the same thing, that they would be eligible for too. I am, I would be a little concerned about timing. We'd have to figure it out so it's, it's not taking a lot of time for the warden and for the CEO. But I, I think it would help a lot, especially, and you would have the same situation with the councillors that aren't on county council. They're offering, asking us questions that really should come from the, from the warden and the CEO. So that's, that's my understanding and maybe city councillors want to jump in on that.
Any other comments, Counselor Arnold?
Just to go back, I believe Counselor Bradley made a motion to receive and file or receive it and then have you do this. So it's actually, Mike, is that your motion or like, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what, where we're going with this.
Mayor Arnold, I'm just moving the, that county council endorsed the request of the city of Sarnia to have manual presentation to Sarnia City Council. And if others want to jump in and say that should be universal, that I will leave to you guys. But I'm moving the basic motion that once a year, there'd be an update from the county to the city on issues related to the two groups.
Counselor Cock. Counselor Loosely and I can start.
Sorry, thank you, Warden. Just trying to figure out, there's really nothing in the request that we endorse a request to the county of Lampton. I don't know if it's asking for the county of Lampton to endorse it. I'm more willing to just receive and file at this point. I see that, you know, city of Sarnia has five members already on county council. They have an alternate, which makes it six members of county council. That's two-thirds of their council. I'm surprised that they can't bring back the questions they need to the committees as they come up and get those questions answered back for their city council. Just my comment, thank you.
Counselor Loosely.
Yeah, thank you, Warden Bill. I, if not agreed by the mover and seconder, I would certainly entertain an amendment that would state and furthermore, that this service be offered to any municipalities within the county of Lampton upon request. I think it should be open to everyone.
And a mover, I totally support Mayor Loosely on that. I think that's fair. That's, that's, it should be universal for everyone. And I like your part about upon request. That to me leaves it with the municipality if they desire to have such a presentation. So I'd accept that as part of the motion.
Okay, Counselor Stark.
Yes, I guess I'd like to address the elephant in the room. The reason for this issue coming back to county council is city council entertained a motion at city council to reduce the levy contribution to the county by $10 million. Clearly, there is a concern, or at least amongst the minority of members of city council, that they're not getting value for dollars. I don't happen to share that view, but it certainly was a view that was expressed. And in the context of making sure that the city's position is known to the warden and to the CAO, it's important that the opportunity to ask questions are in fact offered to all members of city council, given that city council provides 49% of the funding. Again, that's not my position. However, that is a position that was expressed by several members of city council, including members of county council that represent the city. So I raise that simply as information and highlight the importance that such a meeting occur and in fact become a annual event so that there is no misunderstanding amongst all members of city council about what county council is responsible for and what in fact is important in terms of the delivery of services from the county that benefit the city. It's important that all members of city council understand what county council does. Thank you.
Counselor Bushy? What is the motion right now?
I'm not just sure. I was wondering if there's any more discussion before we. I believe the motion is that this be received and that there be a process in place for any municipality to request an annual update from the county. Is that?
I think, if I may say, I mean, that's, that's a good motion if you don't support it. Any, any council in the Lampton County or the city could ask for such information from the county. There's no problem that I think we should all support.
Okay, are we clear on what the motion is? Do I, can I get Stefan to read back the motion?
Sure, first of all, I have a seconder on the motion. But assuming you get a seconder, the motion would, would ask that the CEO and warden provide a State of the Union address to city of Sarnia council and any other local municipalities once annually upon request.
If there's no seconder, I second that.
I believe for Counselor Arnold to second that. Counselor Arnold, I see his hand up there.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I didn't second that motion.
No, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak to it once it's seconded and it's actually on the.
So Counselor Bushy, a second of that. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council. I don't like to see the warden spread out and go to individual municipalities and essentially have a meeting with them. I think that we should all be treated fair, all treated equal. And I would hazard to suggest that the warden and the CAO put together a 10 to 15 minute presentation that can be posted on the county website. If people have questions in regards to what the future directions and initiatives are that are important to the lower tier municipalities, then they can forward them into the warden's office. But for the warden to go to us individually and essentially conduct a meeting without the rest of us knowing what's going on, I thought we were a federation all acting together. And that just splits the federation that much further and makes some people feel that they're being discluded from all conversations that actually, if there's a request from one of us, it should be coming back to county council to be addressed. And then if we have correspondence that needs to go out to those municipalities, then that's the way it should be handled. When I was a warden, we used to try and do that kind of thing. We actually offered to go around each municipality and many of the municipalities said exactly the same thing that I just said. That they wanted to all be treated equally, all have access to the same information and know exactly what was being spread around out in the community so that everybody was still part of the same federation.
Just on a comment regarding that the Municipal Officers Association invites, they have an annual meeting, which all county councillors, all lower-tier councillors are invited to. That would be, in my opinion, an appropriate place to address that kind of a address. But that's just, it's a, everybody's in one place at one time, everybody's welcome invited. Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, can I just add to that? I would like a recorded vote on this because I think it's an important issue. But if I understood the mover and the seconder who brought this forward, one of the things is, you know, I've been on county council since 91. And when I say to people, Front Street, that's a county road. Or, you know, Confederation County Road, or, or the county takes care of the homeless issue. I would say in the greater population, there's still, and it probably will be there forever. But we thought, I think the mover and seconder thought this could diminish with the general public in the community because our meetings are not just streamed, they're televised on, on local cable. This would be an opportunity just to inform and educate the public here about the nature of who does what in the county system. I think that was a big part of this because it comes up continually and I'm sure it does with some of the other mayors too. So, and I would like a recorded vote so it's on the record.
Okay. I guess I'd like to understand the motion right now. It is upon request. Stefan, if you could, motion as it stands?
Yeah, so the motion that's currently on the floor, which is moved by Counsel Bradley and seconded by Counsel Bushy, is as follows. And if you vote in favor, you vote in favor of this action taking place, is, is for the warden and the CAO to provide annually a State of the Union address to city of Sarnia council and any other local municipal council who requires it upon request.
How's that wrong with that?
Counselor Napper? Oh, you're on mute.
I have a question, I'd probably be out of line. But aren't we bordering on this Sarnia-Lampton agreement there? Like a lot of this stuff could be answered there. Like a lot of this stuff is, is on record, is what we do there. I think we're kind of bordering on that. And I can understand where the city's coming from. Like I think it'd be good information because sometimes we hear that they're paying 48%, that we hear 51%. But I think it'd be good information. But I'm just asking that question not, you know, out of my own ignorance more than anything.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'll support the motion, not because I see this, I, I understand my colleagues' concern that this may seem like a divide and conquer tactic. But again, this wasn't my motion either, but I did support it. I see this as an opportunity to clarify and provide very useful factual information more than anything. Not to conduct a separate meeting, but almost in a delegation sense, to be there to answer questions and to provide a great overview of what work the county is doing. So I see this more as a bridge-building opportunity and a way to smooth out some of the rough edges that I've been seeing of late, coming from some members of our council in Sarnia. So more of a clarity and, and bridge-building exercise.
Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Warden Weaver. I guess I'm just a little confused here on how the warden and the CAO would make a 10 or 15 minute presentation on how they spent $329 million. I think it would be better spent if, any council, whoever it is, if they invite you out or if you choose to go, that they have a list of questions done ahead of time so that you can answer them. Because unfortunately, you know, the warden and the CAO is not going to be able to answer $329 million.
$329 million worth of questions. I think to be fair to you and to C A O that goes out, that that list of questions should come ahead of time so that it can be an informative meeting. Having you out to our council for 15 minutes, not going to be very informative. But if we sent you a list of questions we had in regards, I think that would be a very informative meeting at that point. I'm going to struggle to support this only because I'm not really sure that this is what would be, what I would call useful information to the City of Sarnia or to any other municipal council. I think they should be sending the list of questions ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bradley.
I understand those concerns and I'm trying to be very diplomatic here, but there are serious, serious issues in the relationship that established the city coming back in. And I think the best way to address that is through dialogue. And what I, I'm willing to suggest this, and I don't have the permission of the person that sent it from Sarnia Council, but want to suggest this, that we try it for one year and see how it works. And then review, because if I think it's, I can tell you, we used to have meetings with the M P and the M P Ps and they became absolutely useless. And they were combative and, and there wasn't a great dealing of, it was, it was, it wasn't useful. So why don't we try this for one year? And I, I'm willing to put that in the motion, that we try it for one year to see if this is productive for the member municipalities who want to be part of this. And if not, then we just, we kill it. But let's just try it for one year and see how it goes.
Okay. Any other discussion? I guess I would like to see specifics on what they would, city would like to see in the State of the Union. It will be a general, okay, I see Mayor Hand. Be a general, general statement, a general overview unless there's something specific that needs to be brought forward. And that needs to come in prior to presentation. And it certainly would be helpful if it was to everyone, whether it's made at a County Council meeting like this to all. Mayor Hand.
So I just had, I was thinking, another way to get at it perhaps is to have an information day or session or evening or afternoon, whatever, at the county and invite everyone to a session where it talks about, this is what the county provides. It's the educational portion. If people don't understand what they get for the investment, and then they'd also have the opportunity to forward the questions in. But it's done in the, in the county chambers as a session for, for everyone that is interested in attending.
Okay, sounds like there's some different options on how to do this. The motion is what the, the motion is, but I will, there's no other questions or comments? Stefan, I'm going to ask you to do the, what the motion is again, because I did realize it was changed to a one year thing.
Correct, so there was an amendment on the table by Counselor Bradley to essentially put a timestamp on this motion. That is a one year timestamp. I didn't hear the, the seconder consent to that amend, to that amendment. And if he does, then I can read out the amended motion.
Is there a seconder for the one year amendment, Counselor Bushy? So that, whether we vote on the amendment to start with?
I'll, I'll just combine it if that makes sense. As we know exactly what, what council is voting, because a lot of options have been put on the table. But if County, County Council votes in favor of this, you're voting for this. Within the next year, that the warden and C A O once annually, present a State of the Union address to City of Sarnia Council and to any other local municipal council who requires it upon request.
Okay. And Counselor Bird, I seen you at your hand, question?
No, I'll be second that.
It's already moved and seconded, thank you.
Okay.
So, any other discussion? I will ask the clerk to, Counselor Ronboats.
Um, just to clarify from our counselors from Sarnia. It's my understanding from what you've said that there's some discontent with the county as far as where their dollars are going from Sarnia. And you're hoping that a meeting will just kind of quiet that discontent, is that correct?
That's my opinion.
Counselor Stark.
I agree, it's clarification that will add to education. Thank you.
Okay. I'll call on clerk to call a vote. When you get the vote, I'd ask that you raise your hand or do a real clear yes or no, whether it's a thumbs up or a thumbs down, with a yes or no, so that it's, can be recorded properly and decisively.
I believe Counselor Bradley asked for a recorded vote, so I will choose the name where we start from. And then we'll go from there. And we're starting with Deputy Warden Marriott.
I'm a no.
That's a no. Counselor Miller.
No.
That's a no. Counselor Napper.
Didn't hear that.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Ronboats?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Stark?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Veen?
No.
That's a no. Counselor White?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Arnold?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Bird?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Bushy?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Broad? That's a no. Counselor Cook?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Ferguson?
Can't hear you, Dave.
No.
That's a no. Counselor Hand?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Lucely?
Yes.
That's a yes. And Warden Weaver?
Yes.
It carries.
Okay. We're on to item 11A, which is the Long Term Care Division. And this is the report that has the motion in it from our presentation this morning. And get to it here. There's a recommendation there that County Council endorsed the Ontario Health Team full application and authorized the warden to sign the full application for submission. Its staff report back further to council regarding how to model, how the model will work in practice, including governance and the allocation of distribution of funds amongst its participating partners. I see, Counselor White.
Move the recommendations.
Counselor Hand, seconding that. Any questions regarding that? Counselor Bradley?
I'd support the motion, but with an amendment at, at, at no cost to the County of Lampton.
Counselor Stark is seconding that amendment. Any discussion? Counselor Cook?
So, yes, through you, Warden. So just with the amendment, if there's no cost to the County of Lampton, does that mean if the costs do come back that any programs that get started would cease? Or what would that, what would that mean, there's no cost to the County of Lampton?
Counselor Stark.
Just to clarify, my seconding of that motion is to indicate that I would like to know if and what the costs would be associated with this program. So until such time as we know the costs associated, I am not interested in moving forward.
Counselor Bradley?
The way I see this is, I think we're all, I think we're on the same wavelength talking about Counselor Stark. So let's move this forward to the next stage, which they have some deadlines. But again, as said earlier, over and over again, an ambulance service stands out above the split. And so many other times, we've been entrapped in, and by the province into programs and then left holding the bag at the end. So I think we're endorsing it, we're moving it forward. And I hope this would flag very clearly that we're not interested in being financially involved, given all our other responsibilities.
Okay, does part B of that recommendation not, we're getting a report back on how the model will work in performance, allocation and distribution of funds amongst the participating partners? Does that not cover what your amendment covers?
The way I see it is that we're just putting on the record that we do not want to become part of this financially, but support it. And yes, it'll come back to us. But this way, we flagged already and I think Bluewater Health understands where we're coming from, that we just don't want to be involved financially at this stage. It may change, it may change if there's real value to the county being involved. But I just think we need to say it upfront.
Okay, we will vote on the amendment first, it's been moved and seconded. Let it be, item C, that it be at no cost to the county. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Carry. So we're brought on that motion, the recommendation now that is there with the amendment added. Any questions regarding that recommendation? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Item B is resuming committee meetings in the report, in the council chambers. And there's a recommendation there that on September 16th, A M and E M committee will meet in person. Unless there is something changes. So the recommendation is there that we'll meet in council chambers with the protocol. Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, I'm not supportive of this at this time. I know the issues we're going through here, trying to get to those type of meetings together and trying not to expose people to people, including staff and the public. So I'm going to move that we table this to the October 7th meeting. And at that point, we'll know how the school openings have gone. We'll know if this second wave that's supposed to be coming has happened. And, and I think that would be the prudent thing to do. So I'm going to move we table it to the October 7th meeting.
Counselor Napper, are you seconding that?
Yes, I think it's a good or great idea.
Okay, David, the motion has no debate. We'll ask if everyone's in favor. Opposed? That is carried. It's been tabled, A M committee minutes from August 19th. I would ask Chair White.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I present, through you, I present the County Council, the minutes of August 19th, Committee A M meeting.
Okay. We had a medical officer of health update. Went on to Infrastructure Development Service Division. Item one was correspondence. Item two, correspondence from member municipalities. And item three, a request for Drainage Act that was defeated. Information reports, item four, receive and file. Item five, regarding tourism oriented directional signage. Item six, road widening, widening dedications. Item seven, regarding winter maintenance agreement. Public Health Services Division, item eight, correspondence received and filed. Item nine was information reports. Cultural Services Division, item 10 was correspondence. Item 11 was information received and filed. Corporate Services Division, amendment to the procedural bylaw, number 12. Item 13 was regarding amendments to procedural bylaw for a proxy vote. That motion was defeated. Item 14 was, there was nothing in camera. Item 14 was adjournment. Chair White.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I move that County Council accept the minutes of Committee A M from August 19th to be received and filed.
Seconded by Counselor Miller. Any further questions? All in favor of the A M minutes? That is carried, thank you very much. We move on to the P M committee minutes and I'd ask Chair Ronboats.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I present the Committee P M minutes for August 19th, 2020, for council's consideration.
Thank you. An update from the Medical Officer of Health. In long term care, we had information reports received, item one. Item two, regarding construction funding subsidies. Corporate Services Division correspondence to receive and file. Item four, regarding amendments to the procedural bylaw for electronic meetings. Item five, regarding the proxy vote, that was defeated. Finance Facilities and Court Services, information reports, and item six, receive and file. Social Services Division, item seven, information reports received and file. Item eight, regarding housing and homeless plan. Item nine is statistical report, second quarter. Item 10 and 11 was in camera, item 12 was raising from in camera. Item 13, adjournment. Chair Ronboats?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I move that the Committee P M minutes from August 19th be received and filed.
Any further questions? All in favor of those? Carry, thank you. Item 13 is an Infrastructure and Development Service Division report that was deferred from the previous P M minutes, or from the previous minutes. The Waste Management Master Plan Reserve Report. Counselor Bird?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. As the staff report says, the plan will be developed over a two-year period with a target timeline of 22, 23 to 2025. But what about the rest of the time of this year, 21 and 22? But the plan continues that this will allow a 10-year period to carry out implementation of the recommended strategies. All of this would be tied into the municipal and county election tenure period together with the Waste Management Contract end date of 2035, which is a 15-year wait, 15 years away. On March 4th this year, council realized the immediacy of this serious environmental problem and showed that in their votes. So I'm greatly concerned both about the proposed delay, unacceptable timeline, and also the lack of sufficient funding being proposed for such a high priority project. If the report that was presented to council on July 8th had contained the economic viability of actually building a waste to energy plant, then I believe council would be in a better position to judge the dollar amount and frequency for allocating to the special fund. And surely there are government grants and funding that can be applied for with such an immediately needed capital project. I just cannot imagine waiting another 15 years from now. So by taking care of the most, most of the negatives in our environment, we will create a very positive scenario. Lots of professional long-term jobs, huge industrial tax increases and fees for Sonia Lampton, a boost to our population and the tourism industry and better health and wealth all around. Surely, that's something that we all want. So we need to start transitioning immediately towards a zero landfill future. I hope my esteemed counselor colleagues who supported my original motion will speak up for a much better timeline, no more delays, and a much higher dollar allocation or grant to the Special Reserve Fund. Thank you.
Okay, comments? There's a recommendation on the table that I'd. Okay, comments, there is a recommendation on the table, and I do not have a mover or seconder for that, or an amendment to that. Counsel Stark, are you moving the recommendation?
I am moving a recommendation.
Counsel Bean, I see as seconding that. Discussion on that now, is there changes or amendments? Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, I guess it's, it's questioned to Counsel Bird. What are you proposing? As an amendment to the 70,000 per year?
I'm sorry, did you say what am I amending?
If I understood, you were saying that there should be more funds going into this reserve.
Right.
Are you putting forward an amendment to put in more money? Or are you going to wait till budget to deal with that?
Well, in answer to that, I mean, I believe, as I mentioned, if, if when we had the first report back from staff in July, four months after my motion, if it had actually looked at the viability of building a plant, we would have had better figures at our fingertips to be able to judge how much we should put away to be able to do that. So for example, if it had cost 50 million for the plant, we'd be able to work out a timeline and how much should be put away, but also be able to apply for grants and funding for such big capital projects. So if we had that information, we'd be able to make a better decision now. But we don't have any of that information. So what we are, are we voting for something that we don't know the ultimate cost of? That's what really concerns me.
Okay, Counsel Bean, and then Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Warden, and members of county council. I think all we're really voting on here is, is to put the money into the plans so that we can figure out exactly what's, what we're going to do. It's going to take more than three years to put this plan together. I'm sorry, but this isn't going to happen overnight.
Counsel Cook?
I guess similar thoughts to, thank you, Warden, similar thoughts to Counsel Ravine. I didn't think this would be, we'd have a number even ready for the budget. I think this is just a starting point. If and when we're going to get there, I'm not sure. So I think it's just better to, if you're going to start it, let's start it with the next budget.
Okay, any other comments? Counsel Napper, did I see your hand?
It's been answered, there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the recommendation there? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Item 14 is a notice of motion from Counsel Bradley. Just on the procedures of this, I've been asked to clarify. So mover of the motion, Mayor Bradley has permitted to write a brief concise statement as to the reasons he's proposing the recommendation. And that there will be no debate on the motion for reconsideration. It will be a majority vote. It will be, the role will be called by the clerk. And we'll see where that is after that. So if there's a seconder, if Mayor Bradley would like to present his motion, and someone's willing to second that.
Very simple that we reconsider the decision of July the 8th by county council not to have a countywide bylaw. I realize that the warden has said I have the right to speak. The county rules are different in the city. We don't allow that right. And I'm going to respect the fact that I'm not going to speak if the rest of my colleagues can't. So I'm simply asking for the reconsideration, and I'm asking for that vote to be recorded. Thank you.
Okay, there's a seconder for that motion.
Okay.
Counsel Bush. I'd ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
Thank you. So the motion for reconsideration on the masking bylaw issue has been asked to be recorded by Counsel Bradley. We are starting with Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Broad?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Cook?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Ferguson?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Hand?
Couldn't hear you.
No.
That's a no. Counsel Loosely?
Yes.
That's a yes. Deputy Warden Marriott?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Miller?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Napper?
You're on mute?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Rombo?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Stark?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Bean?
No.
That's a no. Counsel White?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Arnold?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Bird?
No.
That's a no. Counsel Bushy?
Yes.
That's a yes. And Warden Weaver?
No.
That's a no. The motion fails.
Okay. Thank you for that.
For the record, for the record, Warden, can we have the actual number? We actually have the weighted vote number?
Correct. It's defeated 29 to 8.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business prior to bylaws? Counsel Bradley?
Yes. I have a motion, and it's directed to county council as the public health board, that, and this motion was coming no matter what on this issue. It's been a great concern to me over the last number of months, that not unlike so many other places like Oxford County, Windsor, London, you name it, the public health does not disclose the number of COVID cases in a community. And I think the vote today illustrates that wouldn't that be a good benchmark to have? If you believe masking isn't necessary for your community, you can measure it. So my motion is very simple, that once a week, public health releases the COVID statistics by community to the public.
Seconded by Counsel White? Discussion?
And I would like this vote recorded too, please.
Okay. Counsel White?
Thank you. I think it's a good idea. We have an interesting opportunity now, if nothing else. I believe masking helps. I believe our numbers are down significantly, thanks to our partner municipalities who've also joined in implementing a masking bylaw. I think what we're left with though is, is a unique opportunity in the province to collect this data. And I think it's in the public interest to know exactly how the masking bylaws across the county are working. So I think it's a simple request, and, and I believe it's a great opportunity for, for good data to be shared.
Counsel Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council. I'd just like clarification of how deep we go into the communities. Is it just by municipality, the 11 in, in the federation? Or are we going to go down to Oil Springs and Wilkes-Barre and places like that?
The answer's simple, it'll be there's 11 municipalities, it'll be the other 11 municipalities. And I give you an example, a few weeks ago, we had a rural urban situation with 15 people getting COVID. We didn't know if that urban was Point Edward, was it Sarnia, was it St. Clair? We didn't know the rural, found out anecdotally. And again, I mentioned over and over again, it happens elsewhere. Oxford's a really good example. They published, Elmer has 25 cases. And I also recognize that the city will be the leader on this just by the population. But it's full of public disclosure. And in this illness, one thing I have learned, disclosure, disclosure, disclosure. So it would be specific to the 11 municipalities, and public health has that data.
Follow up Counsel Arnold, then Counsel Ferguson, and then Counsel Bean.
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. Yes, I know in Chatham Kent, they tell where it's at, like they tell the business or wherever, because it'll come over the radio and they'll say such and such variety store had four people that were infected, so we've quarantined them, blah, blah, blah. So I just don't want to get down to that kind of level of detail. I don't think it's necessary. So thank you very much.
And that was not the intent, it is simply the communities.
Counsel Ferguson?
When the rural urban one, it showed up on the CTV news, and it's anecdotal, we do not know how accurate those were, because we did not know where it was. People are asking questions in the community. I do not like to have it narrowed down to community, and makes people paranoid of each other. As you go through, they do share the information they believe across the province and where this happens. It is for closed eyes only. Thank you.
Counsel Bean?
I have to agree with Counsel Ferguson.
Okay. Counsel Lucy?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Bill. I, I think we should do this. My concern is if there was a problem in the town of Petrolia, I would want to know rather than wondering where it is. Thank you.
Counsel Rombo?
I'm just wondering what the, well, obviously Dr. Renaday doesn't agree with this, otherwise he would be releasing this information out. I, my concern is that people will stop getting tested if they're afraid that they're going to be outed as having COVID. It's become somewhat of a negative thing within all the communities. I would hate to see people stop getting tested based on the fear that it could come back to, the information could come back to them.
Okay, Counsel Bradley?
None of this information is specific to individuals. That's a privacy issue. This is to communities. And I would point out to you that the public health officer identified Landmark, Retirement Home, and the other, none of you, all those places, which was a great help to the public to understand and to deal with their own situations that related to relatives. So this is simply by community. As I said, Sarnia will probably be leading the list. But as of today, when this, if this passes, we can then, can then look at how successful we've been. And that includes on the masking issue. And we can see if it's made a difference, and we can see if it hasn't made a difference. And I think Counsel White alluded to it, here's a chance to show, I mean, I don't like where this county's at on this issue, but we can show really what is happening with the masking, and what difference it makes. So to me, I'm trying to make something good out of something I don't agree with with the county, but I think this is a very positive step for everyone in the county.
Okay, Counsel Napper?
As I totally agree, I think if there's one in Wyoming here, and you know, it's putting awareness out to, to different people, say, hey, look, look, it's in our municipality, and let's tighten up here. I think it's a, it's a good thing. And you know, it takes all that coffee shop talk away, and you get the true facts. And I think it's very important that we know where they are. And I see nothing wrong with that.
Counsel Cook?
Well, that doesn't mean they picked it up in Wyoming. They could have brought it back to Wyoming. They might have picked it up anywhere. I guess I find this really a real hard argument to follow, because I agree with what Counsel Rombo said, then you're starting to pick blame. And these small communities that have small populations, then I think it's really hard to start making it known XYZ has got a case in their community.
Counsel Bean?
Yes, the way I see it is we should never let our guard down. Doesn't matter what community you're in, we should always be proactive to this virus and never let our guard down.
Okay. Counsel Stark?
Just a question, is this a notice of motion, or? I presume it is.
It's a motion for today, and it's a motion to be voted on today as the public health board, not as county council, as the public health board.
Are we going to defer to our clerk as to whether it's a motion or a notice of motion? Following our procedure by law?
Yeah, no, it's an interesting question here. And again, typically, they, our notices of motion are supposed to be filed six days in advance. It helps people do their research on it. But as Counsel Bradley does note, the board of health is somewhat of an issue. So we are a bit of a gray area. Ultimately, whichever way council wishes to proceed is really up to council's decision. At this point in time, I can't sort of slice this baby in half in any way. So as long as you're clear and comfortable in terms of where you wish to go on this question, then I don't see any downfall in moving forward. But if the majority of you are unclear in which more research, then that's a relevant factor in deciding how you wish to move forward.
Counsel Stark, then Counsel Rombo, we'll carry on with the session.
I'm quite happy to support the motion. However, I would remind members of council that I previously asked for a meeting of the board of health. And I was told that there was no need to call a meeting. So are we now having an emergency meeting? What are, when did the board of health become convened as a separate board and a separate meeting?
Stefan?
No, again, a good question. Whenever you have a public health matter, and you did, you did through your committee, and therefore it was on today's agenda, public health matters are effectively dealt with through the board of health, and therefore effectively on a meeting to meeting basis, you're acting on a hybrid basis, one, your classic municipal meeting, and then secondly, your classic board of health meeting. So as a result of that, that's how you've been operating for, for quite a period of time. I'm not suggesting that, you know, it's as white or black as perhaps should be. But nonetheless, on this, on this, on this point, the same considerations apply interpreted the practical consideration than a hard rule, i.e. if you're prepared, you feel prepared, you feel confident to vote on a substantive issue, then you can move forward. If you don't feel confident on a substantive issue in the sense that you wish to have a little bit more time in research, then that's also a decision that this, the majority of this council can decide and effectively move this to a, to a different meeting.
Follow up Counsel Stark, then Deputy Warden Marriott?
And I will leave this final comment, and that is, I would give notice to this council that, given the fact that we get virtually every, the medical officer of health gives an update at all committee meetings and all, at all council meetings, that from this point forward, I am happy to introduce topics that involve emotions related to public health. Just to notice that this in fact does not require an emergency meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Warden Marriott?
Just wanted to comment that I don't see the benefit to this. If there was, say, 50 new cases reported in the city of Sarnia, what benefit is that? I mean, we're supposed to, the doctor has said we're supposed to go out into the community as if it's everywhere, and not, you know, if it's announced that there's new cases in Sarnia, they don't want, you're supposed to presume it's anywhere and everywhere. And I think if, you know, I've heard it said before, we're not supposed to have politics decide health decisions, that's what the doctor's there for. And that's why I have a problem supporting this.
Counsel Arnold, and then Counsel Rombo? Mute? Counsel Rombo? Counsel Arnold, you're on mute. Oh, we lost somebody.
Warden Bill, I'll defer to Counsel Rombo first. She was up first, and then I'll do it.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just want to be clear, like, we as mayors have had the opportunity to hear what Dr. Renaday says on a regular basis, on a weekly basis. And he has explained to the mayor's groups on Wednesday mornings, his reasoning behind this. There are several members of county council who were not privy to that information. All of the people like Steve Miller and Mike Stark and Margaret Bird, I think we need to be fair to them to give them an opportunity to hear Dr. Renaday's explanation as to why he has chosen to do things the way he has. And I don't think it's fair to go forward with this vote without them having all the information that the rest of us have.
Okay, Counsel Arnold, do you have anything to add to that comment?
Yes, Warden Weaver, thank you very much, and members of county council. Beans, we're talking that this is actually a Lampen County Board of Health meeting. I'd like to make a motion to table this motion until Dr. Renaday is in attendance, and he can give comment in regards to his stance on why he will not publicize.
I would second that motion, Warden Weaver.
Thank you. I think Counsel Broad is as well. Counsel Bradley?
Question, the table of the motion must have a specific time and date where that motion's going to be tabled to.
What I would suggest, Warden Weaver, is our next committee meetings, and we can do collectively like we do in the past.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to the next committee meetings for, with a discussion It's been moved and seconded to, to the next committee meetings for, with a discussion with a doctor. I will call the question, call in for favor of the tabling motion.
I got, asking for that vote to be recorded, Mr. Warden.
The tabling motion?
I'm asking it be recorded. Any role?
Sounds like he's playing with crack project.
Alright, so this is a motion to table, the aforementioned motion to the committee meetings of September sixteenth. And it's a recorded vote required, requested by Counselor Bradley. And we are starting with Margaret, Margaret Byrd, Counselor Byrd. Again, this is the, on the motion to table.
Can I just ask you, are we then going to vote on the original motion or are we sticking with the amended one?
We, we know, there's no amended motion at this point in time. At this point in time, what we're looking at is a motion to table Counselor Bradley's motion that, and which was seconded by Counselor White to have public health disclose numbers of positive COVID nineteen by municipality. So again, there's a motion to table that. And if it carries, it gets tabled to the September sixteenth meeting. If it doesn't, then we get into the substance of the motion.
Okay, yes.
Motion to table, that's a yes. Counselor Byrd, so Counselor Bushy?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Bradley?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Broad?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Hand?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Lucely?
No.
That's a no. Counselor, Deputy Warden Marriott?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Romboats?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Stark?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Veen?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor White?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
That's a yes. Warden Weaver?
Yes.
So the, the, the motion to table carries and the matter is tabled to the committee meetings at September sixteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business? Counselor Romboats?
Yes, I was just wondering if Dr. Renade could prepare a report prior to that committee meeting so that the information is laid out for county prior to the meeting.
Okay, he will. I'm sure he will have that for us. Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Warden Weaver. On a lighter note, I want to thank the county staff and the IT department. For those that didn't hear, Don Yefimia just got an eight hundred thousand dollars of internet being spent in our municipality. The village of Florence is now getting fiber optics. And it was with the cooperation and the help of the IT staff at the county that helped our staff put an excellent application together. And we are now moving forward with some really exciting internet news. I want to thank the county for that, Bill. Thanks.
Okay. Any other, other business?
Counselor White? Mr. Warden, I would like to have a report on success or lack of the construction on Lake Shore Road. I have been driving on Lake Shore Road in Tern or Modlin and I haven't seen really any action. Could we have a report on that? Why there is no action done?
Okay, I believe.
Is it possible that we can hear some reasoning for it today?
I believe you could call and, and talk to the manager and they could give you that. I see Mr. Cole there. Do you have any updates on that? Are you prepared to speak to that?
Well, Mr. Cole is here. He could give us a report right now. I mean, for, for days and days, there is no work on that. And then the Lake Shore Road is very busy street and all the, all the cars are just moving around from one place to another. I think he could, he could give us a notice what, what's going on.
Could we have an update, Mr. Cole?
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. I won't, I, I don't have a specific, like piece of, of event that's, that's occurred that has, you know, created a significant delay, but there, that project has been extended slightly. The, the end date was always going to be into October and we've extended it into the beginning of November. This, as, as you may be aware, is a joint project between the city and the county. It involves a water main replacement as well as the road reconstruction. And we are currently waiting for the water main replacement to be complete before we start the road reconstruction. It, it's, you know, there's, there's been a, there's been a, a minor delay, but it hasn't been significant. And that's what we've been communicating to the public all the way through this. And, and I believe we've had good communication out to the public. We've, we've talked to every resident along that stretch and have posted on our, on our road closure website, the updates for closures. So that, that's kind of where it is now. If you'd like something further, I can bring back something further. If you wish, but that, that's a very brief status update.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? I have a couple of items here. Just regards to 2020, there's been a year of cancellation and adjustments. At Lampton County, we have made many adjustments to every aspect of what we do. And I want to commend all our staff for stepping up and making the extra effort to keep our operations going and working well during unprecedented times. I think we're doing a great job. Our frontline workers and first responders and all, all sectors of our service delivery to our communities have excelled through this challenging times. Every elected official that's on the screen and at the local counties or local municipalities has been challenged with situations like never before. I know we've gotten pressure and making adjustments that unprecedented. And our communities have worked together to support each other like never before. We have people going above and beyond all across the county. It's a challenge to keep kindness and keep the stress out of everyone, but everyone is doing a great job. I guess at this time, I'd just like to publicly say on behalf of the county, to everyone in the county, we should all be proud of our collective selves for how we have looked after this so far in Lampton. And we're not ready to quit. We have much more to learn and to do through this COVID challenge. Just, we are Lampton strong and thank you to everyone that's been a part of this throughout this whole season up to date. We've made it to September. There's a few other things to, we have many things to continue to do. I do have a couple of announcements. Biannual Wardens banquet that is usually held in November will not be held this year because of restrictions on events and get, get togethers. So there won't be no Wardens banquet. And also the county council's annual steak fry has been canceled for 2020 as well. People together. And a tradition at that event has been for aspiring wardens to announce intentions to bring their names forward as a candidate for consideration. And at this time, I would like to say that I will be seeking support for one more term as warden. And I would open the floor to anyone else. Counselor Martin, Deputy Warden Marriott?
Thank you, Warden Bill. And I had planned on, on making that intention as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, Mr. Warden, could I, could we hear that again? I could, it was cutting out here. What did Mayor Marriott say?
I had said that I was, I was, wasn't sure of the timetable, but I was prepared to make the announcement that I would seek the wardenship as well.
Thank you. I presume, Mr. Warden, this is open now till, up to the day, is it December something? It's open up for anyone up till that date, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is the, traditionally, it's been part of the county council's steak fry that's held in October or September, the next couple of weeks, and that's been canceled. So that's why the, that's why I brought that forward and left it open for anyone to do that. Seeing no other announcements, Counselor Hand?
Could you just confirm then what's the deadline for anyone submitting? That would be helpful for everyone.
I think it's right up to the day of.
Okay. Right, right till December.
Yes.
Thank you.
Stefan has anything different? I believe that's the case.
No, that's correct. Right up until we start the vote essentially.
Okay. Notice of bylaws. Stefan, bring forth the.
Thank you, Warden. It is moved by Counselor Romboats and seconded by Counselor White that bylaws, sorry, I've got too many papers here. Bylaws twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight of two thousand twenty, a circular to be taken as read a first and second time.
All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Romboats, a bylaws twenty-five, twenty-six, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight of two thousand twenty, a circular to be taken as read a third and final time.
Students, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. We'll meet again on October the seventh. Moved by Counselor Napper, seconded by Counselor Romboats. Any other questions? All in favor? Stay safe. That's Carrie. Stay safe, everyone. Have a great day.